Good evening and welcome to September 23, 2024, Tuolton City Council Work Session. We have a couple items on the agenda tonight. First up is our Tuolton Transportation System Plan Update, or TSP update, led by Cody. Welcome, Cody.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. We're here tonight to provide an update on the Transportation System Plan, which we've been working on for about a year and a half now. The last time we were here was back in June, and we were talking primarily about the development of the project list, which has come a long way since then, so we'll talk about that tonight. We also just wrapped up an exciting public engagement phase, so there'll be some information to report on that. And we've also been doing a lot of work on the TSP policies. But the consultants are going to be running the show tonight, so I'll turn it over to Brianna Calhoun from Fair and Peers, and we have Katie Celine from Alta Planning and Design online tonight.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to be here. So our agenda tonight, as Cody said, is going to be quick introduction and then a recap of the summer engagement. Katie will be talking about that. And then we'll talk about the policies and how they've been updated, as well as then talking about the constrained project list. Katie, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and then start in on the engagement?
Can you ask something? Can you hear us now?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Are we be able to go? Yeah, can we go back one more, please? And Katie, you can go ahead and present. Do you want to introduce yourself and then go ahead and go over the engagement recap?
Okay.
Katie, why don't I go ahead and start in on the slides? And then if you're able to jump in, just let me know, and I'll turn it back over to you if that sounds good. So we had a really successful summer engagement. We had a total of over 2,000 interactions with folks over an open house, numerous folks-
Good evening.
Oh, can you hear him now?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, Katie. Can you hear us?
I apologize if you can't. I'm not getting, I'm not able to hear folks in the room.
Got it. We can, we can hear you, Katie. Okay.
Okay. Sounds like from the chat, folks can hear me, so I'm happy to proceed. Please chat me if that's not the appropriate course section. Katie Celine, Alta Planning and Design, very pleased to be here to give you a little update and overview of our findings from summer engagement. So we have had quite a successful round of outreach. We had about 55 participants at an open house and three different focus group events. I'll talk a little bit more about in a moment. We had 913 folks visit the website, which was hosted on the city's website. 269 people took our survey and had over 900 interactions, like different comments on our interactive map, for a total of over 2,000 interactions for this round of engagement. Next slide, please. So a little bit of context about who we heard from in this round. Most participants were residents of Tuolton. We had quite a few folks who work and live in Tuolton, notably 21 students, which reflects some specific focused engagement that city staff undertook connecting with summer interns and engaging them to take the survey. We had about 60 folks identifying as Hispanic or Latino participate in the survey, which is good to see. A fairly good distribution household income-wise, and about 9% identify as having a permanent condition or disability. Next slide, please. And so one of the big focuses of this round of engagement was sharing our big idea projects, which I believe Brianna will talk a little bit more about those in a moment. These were rated on a scale of one to five. We talked about these in the focus groups that we did, as well as through the survey. And the results on this slide reflect the survey question. The average for all projects was very positive. Most responses across the board thought that these big idea projects were in line with their vision for Tuolton. The top one was the 65th Avenue pedestrian bridge. And then the next two highest rated were the Tuolton-Sherwood Road Bridge over Boonsbury Road and the railroad tracks, and the bike and pedestrian bridge idea over Tuolton-Sherwood Road. You can see some just like placeholder conceptual images on the right. I'll show you those. Next slide, please. And then, one of the big themes and questions that we both talked to folks at events and had a question in the survey was, like, overall, after you reviewed this big suite of projects and these big idea projects, are we on track to achieve the vision that we've been pitching as a part of the TSP for a balanced transportation system in Tuolton? And 81% of respondents felt that we were on the right track. Yes, or mostly yes, these projects would achieve their vision. And some of the things that they said in their kind of longer response answers to this was that they felt like these projects addressed the concerns that they shared with the city. They felt that they would improve safety for people walking, biking, and driving, improve walkability and bikability, offer new pedestrian and bike connections, and address traffic congestion and growth. And then folks who said no were concerned about project cost, too much emphasis on bicycle projects, and projects that did not address traffic congestion. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Katie. So did anyone have any questions or concerns?
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions through the chat.
Questions so far? Keep going.
Thank you. Okay, so the TSP policy update. So another big piece of this was taking the current transportation policies that you have and taking another look at these to update them. We use these to, you know, generally guide city decision-making, and took these to really reflect new, both statewide legislation, as well as changing community priorities, as we have been talking to the community. And one change you'll see when you're looking at the list of policies is that they were previously organized by mode. So we had bicycle policies separate from pedestrian policies, et cetera. And they've been reorganized now to fit under the five TSP goals, thinking that that was a better way to kind of organize them and see how the policies are really advancing the goals for the transportation system plan. And so would love to hear your thoughts. If you had kind of thoughts about specific policies, but really overall, too, do you feel like this set of policies, as they're sitting now with the edits that have been made, do they advance the city's goals for transportation? And do you see anything that you feel is missing in those?
I think these are all great goals, but I feel like through the process, something got missed with, I guess, looking how it affects people or our community. Like, there were some things that got on the non-constrained list that I felt like were really important projects for our community. I'll pick on one, just like the adaptive signal system update. That's huge for our community. I mean, that's the biggest complaint we get. Somehow, in these goals, it got missed. So I'm not sure what, I feel like something could have been added to help with that, but that these goals are all great, too.
Yeah.
Others? All right.
Okay. Well, thank you. And certainly, if you're, as you're looking through them, if you see further changes that you'd like to see, we'd be happy to continue to take comments on this. So then, to kind of advance forward into a recap of just where we've been with this and where we're going and where we're kind of wrapping things up. We went through a lot of work to get to this big giant list of projects. So thinking about projects that were in other adopted city plans or regional plans, thinking about safety concerns, what we were hearing from the community for projects, as well as then our technical analysis as we were looking at the existing system and figuring out where there were gaps for different modes. All of those pieces fed into the giant unconstrained project list. And that was the full universe of potential projects that we wanted to first consider as we were going to the community and having these discussions. So from there, you know, we really started to think about them based on the transportation goals, the transportation priorities. Like, how do we want to prioritize these? And look at the whole range of them to start to see which of these better advanced the five goals for the TSP and which ones aren't quite hitting on multiple goals. And from there, we start to think about funding constraints. So looking at, for the projected funding that you'll have for transportation for the next 20 years, what projects, how many of these projects could we potentially reasonably fund for the next 20 years? And using those different pieces, get to a constrained, fiscally constrained project list.
Just one point. Can you point out for folks, all the people watching, what MMLOS stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. MMLOS is multi-modal level of service. So setting some sort of, like, level of service, a threshold for how you want each of the different modes to be able to operate within the city.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Okay, so then, as we're thinking about a constrained project list, let's first kind of define what we're thinking about here. So the constrained project list is financially, fiscally constrained to about 125% of our expected transportation revenue over the next 20 years. And this is dictated by kind of statewide planning rules, so that's what they use for building this list. And it identifies what we hope is a more feasible list of projects that could be built within the 20 years, and looking at those for the highest priority ones that we've identified that fit with the community goals. And so we, as we're thinking about this, too, we really want to take a holistic look at this, to say, like, are we building a balanced list that covers different types of modes, different geographic areas of the city, so they're not all in one area, different ranges of costs, some higher-cost projects, some lower-cost projects, as well as kind of timelines. Are there ones that could be built very quickly and very easily versus ones that we know are going to be much larger, much longer-term projects, to really take advantage of opportunities as they come up? So. And then, with all of that as kind of the context for this list, the things that constraining the project list doesn't do is that it doesn't mean that a project on this list is guaranteed to be built. It puts it in the realm of possibility, but it does not have funding attached to it necessarily. We put a general cost estimate to it, but that's still another piece that has to be done. And once it's on the constrained project list, it doesn't have to be built in any particular order. So we do go through a prioritization process, and that helps us find kind of a cutoff point of, these are the higher priority ones we've looked at. We want to make sure they're on the list, and these are the ones that don't, aren't on the list. But other than that, then there's a lot of leeway as to how you can then find projects, put them on the CIP, find funding for them, find grants for them. So there's not a specific rule that you have to do, like, the highest priority one first, and then the next one next. So that's great. And then, projects that don't make the list still have the possibility of being built. It's not like it's completely off the list, it's out of the realm of possibility. We can't look at these for another five, 10 years until we update the TSP again. But it just shows that it's not on your constrained list, it's not as higher priority as the other pieces. And there are just some constraints as to looking at those into the future. And so as I kind of walked through before, some of the steps in building this, we're thinking about refining the projects, scoring them, putting some high-level cost estimates to them, looking at our general projected revenue for transportation projects, and then matching those top prioritized projects, that top list, with the funding that we think we'll have available within the next 20 years, to find kind of that cutoff point of where are we going to be able to fit things onto the list, and where are things falling off of that constrained list? And then one thing that's not reflected on the pack that you got, just because of time constraints when we had to put all the materials together, is that the project list that you have doesn't yet reflect the feedback from the CAC. So we were able to talk to the Community Advisory Committee earlier this month, got a lot of great feedback, got, you know, heard their concerns and different thoughts about that. And so that hasn't been reflected in this list yet, and we're still working on incorporating all of those comments into the list. So those will be also part of this kind of refinement piece. But just some high-level takeaways, summarizing some of the things that we heard from folks were that we wanted to make sure that there were, we were including some of the smaller projects that would be a lot easier to fund and build quickly. Noticed some spots where we could consolidate overlapping projects, that we wanted to think about how we want to separate out the larger state or county projects, and how we want to treat those on the project list. Had some good discussions about kind of reviewing the feasibility of some of those larger crossing projects that are very expensive. And then, we had a lot of great comments on very specific projects to include or not include on the constrained list, and have a great record of those to be able to wrap into these comments as well. And so, these numbers here are just two different ways of thinking about the list as it stands without those edits in them. So they'll, this will certainly change a little bit. But taking a look at the project list as it stands, if you think about it by cost, the larger roadway or maybe complete streets type projects do tend to take up the majority of the cost. A lot of them are larger, more expensive, bigger projects, but they also sometimes, oftentimes, are roadway project combined with a bicycle project, combined with a sidewalk project, so they have a lot of big elements in them. If you instead look at it by total number of projects by mode, we try to get to a little bit more balanced list of, you have a little more on the crossings and the bicycle and trail projects, but you'll see it kind of is split across multiple different modes. So again, as we were thinking about building this, how do we kind of balance those different pieces and have a good mix of large projects, small projects, hitting on lots of different modes? And so I wanted to open this up, kind of just discussion, would love to hear from you, where you're thinking about this, if you have specific projects as you see. Just to talk you through the project list that you have, it is broken up by mode, so there's a column that indicates that, but you have each of the modes listed together. And then, as it stands with this list, all of the active transportation projects are included on the constrained list. And the only places where we did have to kind of make some decisions around things on the constrained list versus not making the constrained list is within the roadway projects. So the last two pages of the project list, you'll see some that are indicated as yes, it's on the constrained list, and some that are indicated no, not on the constrained list. So would love to hear if you're looking at that list and seeing, you know, wanting to see maybe some changes as to which of those are falling above or below that threshold as to what's being included.
Council Brooks?
I'd like to just back up a second, just with rationale. I am curious about, Councilor Pratt made a good point around DEI things. I'm also wondering, there's been a tendency now where we have run out of places to link things, and there's choices that are being made over environmentally sensitive places, and I'm wondering if those aren't indicated. I'm wondering if things that line up for community development block grant funding is, are identified? And then, when I back it up, I'm curious around how we're interacting with, not just our community, but the community, our community's needs around a transportation system that obviously goes outside of our city. So we have such a big thing coming up with the decision with Metro about Sherwood's UGB being expanded. And there, you know, this is my old saying, there's not a constraint for building until you have the transportation system to support it in our state. So I'm curious about the outcomes that our citizens are really looking for, which is about keeping traffic moving and avoiding being a traffic jam in the middle of getting to somewhere else. And that's where I would love to see strategy and measurable outcomes, instead of taking a poll and having a list of preferences, but having things that have specific outcomes towards really big needs that we have as a community. And then also, the feasibility, I think it's really important. For instance, when I think about that connector over the freeway into Sherwood, like, or not Sherwood, the Stafford Triangle, I don't know if that would ever have any traction because of how unpopular it is. So those are the kind of constraints, you know, beyond just looking at financial, we kind of do it, look at this time-money thing, which is great, but I'm really interested in form, function, effectiveness, and ways that we can partner with other agencies, communities, in a way that works well with each other, and is really mindful. I don't think, I don't see how it works with the expansion in Sherwood without an above-grade crossing. I just don't see it. I don't see how it works with, you know, like, when we tried to speed up things on 122 Sherwood Road, and we couldn't do it as fast as we'd like because there's that failed intersection in Wilsonville. So I just feel like some of these priorities, like, we're in a place where we're jammed up in certain places. How are we helping to advocate for those places to get prioritized so that we can move forward with systems that work? And then the other thing that comes to mind for me is all the work that we're doing on the parks and the downtown redevelopment, and how are the departments linking together around this planning? Like, how are we prioritizing with parks? Have we worked with parks on what we think we see we need, or our community building development stuff? So that's just me, like, I'd really like to have some, like, stuff like measurable outcomes, planning, integration, so that if we're doing something that's projected and we're not in a race right now, let's just plan it really well, if we're going to spend the money, right? Especially with constrained money. To me, that seems like a way to prioritize instead of taking a straw poll with our community. I mean, in addition, I'm not trying to be...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council President Pratt and Council Reyes. Okay, you're up first.
Sure.
Thinking about last week's presentation on sidewalks and how people have this different idea of who fixes the sidewalk and all that, I kind of have had, reading the project and thinking about what could be a priority, or what could be something that we can show that we are, that we are listening to the community. And I think that that kind of comes to mind, and I know we're doing bikes and we're doing different crosses. I mean, I'm looking at the list of things, but for some reason, that just popped in my brain when I was looking through the whole, the constraints and priorities and all that. And I'm thinking, we are receiving, we're going to start receiving a lot more emails about sidewalks and people waiting five, seven years, whatever that is, to get their sidewalks fixed from the city if they want to grant, or like, some kind of support. And so that's kind of where my mind went as I was looking at the projects. And obviously, there are, it seems like it's something that we can control, because, I don't know, it's, we don't have to ask the county or work with another city. It's something that, it's something that we can probably do that is a low-hanging fruit for our community, and they can feel happy and proud that they're, that we are helping, listening to them, and see some really bad sidewalks out there that are, that need repair. So that's kind of like what thinks as priorities. Not that the other stuff are not, I mean, obviously, they all are, but just what I, I think it solidified my idea last, last time when we had that presentation, that maybe we need to see more visible things that people can see that we are listening to their voices.
Thank you.
Pratt?
Yeah, I mean, to what Councilor Brooks said, the whole, I don't know, I guess we're just doing this for Tuolton, but there's this whole problem icing our transportation system, and Boonsbury Road's a perfect example, where we've got a road that's a city road, a county road, and then an ODOT road, and there's just that lack of coordination of, like, if we're going to fix it, let's do it at once, or let's look at a long-range plan to make things better. My other question was, you referred to, like, at our table at the advisory committee, we had recommended some things get removed off the constrained list, or like, or combined. And so will this be updated for those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we just haven't had the time to update it since our last meeting, but absolutely.
So you're busy, too? But anyway, thank you.
Other questions? Council Brooks?
I have like, sort of a baby question here. I'm just curious about the bike path across Sagert Bridge, because there's all these little posts, and then a lot of them are knocked over, and it's pretty new. So I'm also just wondering, kind of like, what we can do, lessons learned. And I know that we're really good at that as a city, but I just want to reiterate that. I know that we do really well with putting pipes in at the same time that we're doing projects, and dovetailing those things for efficiency, but just keeping those things in mind as well. And then, we've had a ton of discussion around the possibility of more- And then, we've had a ton of discussion around the possibility of more traffic going on Tuolton Road, and I look at, right now, to take a left-hand turn into Tuolton Road, sometimes it backs up all the way to 99, as it is. So, looking at that particular flow of traffic there and getting an update on that would be something, those are just like little niggly things that have been on my mind. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions? Just got a few. So when the scoring was done, was it pure on, was the scoring based on the committee's feeling of how important the project was? How was the score? Because one of the things I want to factor in, you mentioned before, was the ability to fund it, and the ability to, are there other resources? Did that factor into the scoring, or was it pure like, no, you know, this is the most important thing we need to get done, and that's why it's an eight, but, you know, and something else is a three, but does the number three have a better chance of getting a grant or something like that? So how was that factored into the scoring? Or was it?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we had multiple criteria under each of the five goals. I think totally at 18, don't quote me on that. And we had so a bunch of different things. So is this building a new active transportation connection? Is it building a new roadway connection? Is it addressing a safety issue? There were multiple ones around funding. One was like, the point for kind of lower-cost, quick-build projects that felt like they could be really effective. One was around shared funding opportunities for projects that might be both a city and a county or state-type project. So there were multiple criteria that were used for the scoring to try to hit a lot of those kind of concerns, and try to make sure that we were looking at it holistically and how it addressed the goals that we had for the TSP.
So it is factored into the score?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. I noticed a couple of projects about designated as slow traffic. Like, slow traffic, can you mention, describe what that is for folks?
Yeah, is it traffic calming?
It's like it's about traffic calming.
Traffic calming, absolutely. Yeah, there can be a lot of different ways to do traffic calming, but in essence, it's engineering the road, making some changes to the roadway to encourage folks to drive at a slower speed. So that could be kind of bump outs to the sidewalks, so that it kind of narrows the roadway just a little bit, so people visually see that it's narrowed. There's a lot of different things that fall under traffic calming, but the intent is to make it so that people naturally want to go slower on that street to just kind of overall slow traffic where appropriate.
Did that, those kind of requests bubble up from the community members that would, you know, feel folks are speeding in those areas? How did those projects come up?
I would have to look back. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly look into that.
I know we've got several streets where folks are, want speed bumps and stuff like that, or, you know, slow down traffic, and I just want to make sure that this was something that came up from the community on those streets that, you know, our traffic engineer folks hear about all the time, that people feel that folks are speeding, and we're not necessarily, that we don't have something on the list that no one really thinks is a problem, or other than like, a handful of folks. Because it seems like there's quite a few streets here that we all know can be fast, but some of them, maybe not so much, but I guess, you know, where you live in on the streets is a lot different when you're driving it. And then my last one is on the sidewalk section. So, you know, we've got a lot of things for bike connectivity and stuff, but when I get to the, kind of like, Council Reyes was saying, to the sidewalk projects, there aren't that many, considering looking at the other projects that are out there. And what I hear a lot is about either, one is the lack of sidewalk, or the sidewalk is under the old standard, that's not wide enough, and that, you know, there's a handful of streets mentioned here, but is there anything, and this might be more of a comprehensive plan zoning thing, that, you know, when development occurs, that the sidewalks are, you know, the new, the new normal is a wider sidewalk than what we have, is that factored into the TSP in any way? Because I know the TSP will feed into our comprehensive plan, and I hear from our senior community all the time, our sidewalks are too narrow. You know, to yesterday's, you know, the six feet isn't wide enough anymore for a couple of folks in, you know, in wheelchairs, and someone pushing them can't get by each other. So how's that wrapped into basically updating maybe our standards for sidewalks? Long-winded question, but how's this impact on our planning in the future for sidewalks?
Couple of different ways to think about that, yes. So the projects here are just say, yeah, for example, a sidewalk or enhancing a sidewalk, but we don't say a specific width, because it should be meeting your city's design standards. So as those update over time, then as you're building the project, then they can match, we're not prescribing something that wouldn't match your standards. But then the design standards and the street cross-sections would be, live kind of in a separate place, be a separate effort for this. In things like the policies, too, help to support that and tie into that, but it's not directly included in the TSP work that we're doing.
Okay. Because one of the critiques I heard from someone is, the TSP is very vehicle-focused and bike-focused, not really pedestrian-focused. That there's a great deal of projects for cars and bikes, but not for folks who just want to walk through the community. And I'm just seeing that in the sidewalk section, there's some great trails, but as far as walking through the community and getting from, you know, point A to point B safely, you know, between, the crosswalks are in there, but as far as pedestrian act, you know, the other day, someone said they barely, you know, making it across Tuolton Sherwood Road at Fred Meyer because of the timing of the lights. That's not a lot of time for a person to get across.
That's when I'm getting off the constraint.
Yeah. So that kind of stuff, that's one of my concerns, is, yeah, we want to get people around the cars, we don't want to have the congestion, we want to have a great trail system, but basic, you know, pedestrian act, you know, transportation, people walking from their house to the park, can they do that outside of the trails?
Good. Thank you.
And do it safely. Council Hillier?
Thank you. Would you, would you be able to provide the rubric that you used for the scoring for us all? Please, thanks.
Anything else? All right. Guess we're questioned out for tonight. But it's quite the list. When I read the packet, I'm like, holy capoly. I mean, a lot of good stuff, a lot of good ideas, a lot of good projects, it's just, that's a lot of money over the years, but if we can get, ideally get 20% done, that'd be phenomenal. 50% would be great. Go ahead.
Just to reiterate what the mayor was saying about, I see a lot of people walking more than I see people biking, and I think that's not necessarily because we build it, people are going to come. I think people enjoy walking, especially in days like this, and people run as well in our community, so do a lot of that, and I bump into a lot of people. So it's not that, I think that, that addresses a concern of one of the questions, or people were saying, they were bike-focused, but focused so much on bicycles versus other things, and I think that might be the case, because I do walk our neighborhood, and I see more people walking, like Boons Ferry Road, and I think people enjoy that.
Thank you.
Council Brooks?
I had one more, too. I just keep going back to communication in my mind and partnering. So I'm curious, especially with our new lobbying firm, if there's ways to be thinking strategically that way. What we can do as councils in a city to communicate what our needs are, so that we can help have a collaborative approach, and a proactive approach to large amounts of development really quickly, where we're just widening the road, and how many minutes is it going to be effective? And then, yeah, so community partners, as well as advocacy for our citizens' needs. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you on the advocacy piece. I think adopting the TSP will be very helpful in our future advocacy efforts. We were a little thin on transportation this year, just after wrapping up the bond and being in the process of updating the TSP, and having an adopted TSP going into future legislative sessions will be very beneficial, in my opinion.
Yeah. Council President Pratt?
My last question's just, and the next steps, it says return to city council in early 2025, so will we see anything between now and then? Like...
We won't be coming back in a formal capacity with the next step, so we've gone through most of these pieces here, and our, yeah, our next steps here will be to take all of these different pieces that we've been talking through over the last, yeah, year and a half, and putting it all into a draft TSP document, so.
Okay, so then will we see the draft TSP in 2025, when you come back? Okay.
Yes.
And we'll be asking the CAC to make a recommendation to the planning commission, who will make a formal recommendation to council.
Yes.
Anything else? All right, well, thanks, Brianna, thanks, Cody.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, so council agenda review, communications roundtable, any questions or concerns with any of the five items that are on consent? All right. We've got one proclamation, Forable Health and Inquality Childcare Day in the city of Tuolton, who would like to do that?
Cindy.
Who's first? Cindy or Bridgette, which one?
Cindy.
Okay. All right. Then, Council Hillier, you're up for the pledge? All right. We'll go ahead and do the roundtable, and we'll start with Council Sacco.
I do not have anything to report.
Council Hillier?
Thank you. On, thank you very much. On September 19th, I got to attend the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency Board of Communications, yeah, meeting. Most of us attend virtually, but a few people are out in Hillsborough at the Command Center, which is super cool. I have yet to get out there. But we talked about a lot of things, we went over the normal financial report and that sort of thing, but there are a lot of things, a lot of people focused on our safety, and I think a very interesting thing, especially for our community to consider, is their staffing levels. They have quite a few positions open out there, and if people are interested, they, I'm sure, could go to the 911 website, probably, for Washington County 911, and see there's dispatch positions, there's, there are just a lot of opportunities, especially for bilingual folks, and I think that as this body works to improve the safety around Washington County, well, the metro area, because we are also interconnected, that it's important that we encourage people these great, great jobs, and to find a job as a dispatcher or call-taker, there's supervisors, there's tech services, there's custodial, because they've just brought all their custodial services in-house. So anyway, there's just a lot of different opportunities, and I would encourage people to consider that. I also attended the Heritage Center Foundation event, and I'm proud to say that I am the proud owner of a lot of Crumble Cookie gift cards, and I'm looking forward to a ride with the chief. I'm sure that's what it said.
Council Reyes?
Yeah, no formal meetings or official meetings to report on.
All right, Council Gonzalez?
Nothing to report, been very quiet on my end.
Council Brooks?
I just want to start with the email. I don't know if everyone saw the email that I sent today. We had a discussion, I think on the 26th, about this advocacy letter, and I don't think we did a hand raise, so if anybody has any questions, or, I guess, would everyone like to support advocating for more community development block grant funding by the city for Washington County and our community?
So you're asking for a letter, kind of similar with Chair Harrington did to our congressional delegation from the city of Tuolton?
Yeah, we talked about it, just reworking that letter, and then just encouraging people as well to talk to friends and families, and personally write letters. I forget what exactly the numbers were, but I feel like it was something in the, around 350 is what we actually get, and if we would stay on the plan that was original, we would be at like $850,000, so it's over double. And we can see where we are with housing, and that federal dollars, we know go directly to communities. Anyway, so, I don't know, you have to ask the question, or I ask the question?
No, you just got to, we just got to have four folks say, yeah, let's have, you know, direct on, to have staff, you know, create a letter, you know, specifically, you know, using some of the points from Washington County, but make it a little more specific to Tuolton.
You took out the partnership with Hillsborough and Newington.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, but I don't feel like we need to...
Be specific about the projects we've won, the differences that it's made, we've done that in the past when we're there in person, so.
Yeah.
Very okay with...
Yeah, and maybe consider offering up the partners that we're already working with, so that we can show their current collaborations. Yeah.
Okay. It's on here.
And then I think the important thing, too, is timing, so just following up with the letter, too, just talking about being prepared for their funding cycle with our lobbyists, too, would be really good, to be more effective champions.
Okay. Well, we'll get something together and get it to the mayor for signature, and we'll get it out to everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Oh, I have more announcements. I want to send some meetings, too. I sent out, we had our executive team meeting for the Water Consortium, which was a lot of planning for the upcoming meeting. I sent forward the agenda, but just wanted to really mention that Director Sykes will be presenting, and there'll be a lot of presentations about environmentally conscious innovations that are being utilized around the area. I sent the agenda, it has a link on it, they're public meetings, so if you would like to check it out, or a little refresher on our new fangled thing, join us on that. That's in October. And then I went to the PAB meeting, the PAB meeting was, or the PAB meeting agenda also I sent forward, because for people that are interested in the community development block grants, there's mandatory training to go to right now, and so I know our staff's ready to go. I got a email back today saying that we're signed up, we don't have projects identified, but, but we'll be prepared, and they're skipping the home grant cycle for a little bit here. And then I went to the arts committee meeting. We had a light meeting, but one of the cool things that we talked about was the, we saw some pictures of the art that's going to be installed at the Veterans Plaza in process, so that's really exciting. So you can look at the meeting minute, I'm not sure if they're posted or not, those pictures. And then we also discussed moving forward this year with some traffic box wraps, and we will probably be focusing that, those projects close in to where the Veterans Plaza's going to be as well, to just kind of give the arts committee a little bit more visibility and paying for the buck, so to speak. And I think that's all, all the committee meetings I went to. Thanks.
Council President Pratt?
Well, on Wednesday, the 11th, I went to the Transportation System Plan and Community Advisory Committee, and we looked through the same list and made some recommend, well, we were in different groups, and it was interesting, because like, the one group came up with the, they want the low-hanging fruit, small projects pulled out, one group was, they were really concerned on safety a lot, and then our group, we really dug into those projects, the road projects, and there were some, the waiting scale, it was like, each goal, they had those underlying goals, but they only gave two points if they met, one or two points if they met each goal, so we felt some things were left out. One of them, like the adaptive signals, oh, signage and wave-finding for...
One of them, like the adaptive signals, oh, signage and wave finding for like the, there were some things in there that we really pulled out and felt that they should be added back. And then some things that, a couple of things that could be pulled out. So there'll be some changes there. But it was, there was a lot of interaction. I thought it was really great. Then I'm going to add that the 12th, Council Brooks and I went to the Trades and Manufacturing Forum. And they talked about employability skills, which I thought was really interesting because it's everything from digital literacy to basic human-like communication skills and empathy and ways to work together to find solutions. And they're, they have a program to help teach people to be employable. Then on the 18th, I went to a strategy meeting because the Transportation Roadshow is this Thursday in Happy Valley and this Friday in Hillsborough. And I'm going to be on the roundtable for the Happy Valley one. Someone else might be on the other one. So, and then we're going to have a meeting tomorrow with Clackamas County, the people on that to kind of help refine that more. But it sounds like it's going to be a big group, so we'll see how that goes. Oh, and also I, somebody very brilliant came up with the idea of two rides with the police chief. So I also got one of those.
Quite a bit of meetings the last couple of weeks. The Washington County Lobbying Committee made some major approvals of some serious dollars for transportation funding. There was a transportation development tax expenditure request from Beaverton for $7.8 million to do some improvements on Western Avenue and to fix the signals on Shoals Ferry in Beaverton. And that was approved. Hillsborough had a large project match request from the MISTIP. They're trying to fix the issue at 185th where the max crossing is. They want to elevate the crossing, which should have been done when they built it. It would have been a lot less money so that the train goes over the, you know, over 185th versus stopping traffic as it's going through now. So Hillsborough is trying to put a package of money together to get that fixed. So it was roughly $700,000 from the MISTIP fund. We'll see if it, the project gets picked up. It has to work its way up through Metro to get approved. Significant discussion on the Metro Chief Operating Officer's Urban Growth Report recommendations in regards to Sherwood. It's been all UGB for the last couple of weeks for Sherwood. And whether or not, well, it's not whether or not, what kind of modifications need to be made in order to get Metro support to get over the finish line by the end of the year. Remember Sherwood, it's a combination of residential development and some significant commercial industrial development. And then finally, we got to the 2025 legislative session. Everybody's talking transportation. You know, what kind of things we're, you know, we're going to be lobbying for and think we need to make ODOT whole and the state whole when it comes to traffic and transportation. Later that day was the County Chair, Washington County Chair Mayor's meeting. Was basically all about the supportive housing tax and the services that are provided from that tax and the changes that Metro's envisioning. Washington County staff and Washington County Board is not wild about some of the changes Metro's envisioning. And sees a major impact in Washington County to the tune of maybe like $6 million of funding that will disappear for the folks providing services. We'll probably see this on the ballot in May of next year. If Metro refers it to tinker with the supportive housing tax. Metro is trying to get the support of the three counties and they're not getting it yet. So more to come there. Council Brooks is going to love this one. At the Greater Portland Inc. board meeting was all about Michigan. Michigan has, is an example of how to promote a state and how to promote economic development. Greater Portland Inc. was awarded $2.5 million to promote Portland across the United States. So we look into Michigan, let's see how they did it. And Hillary Doe is the Growth and Marketing Officer for Michigan. They have dropped $20 million promoting Michigan three different ways. One with tourism, the Pure Michigan campaign that we've all seen. The second way is Michigan Pure Opportunity, and that's to attract businesses to Michigan. And the big one they're doing right now is you can, it's called You Can in Michigan. It's attracting young talent to Michigan. And they're thinking, they're like, it's not all Detroit. They're talking about Grand Rapids. Different sections of Michigan have different sectors of business and manufacturing industrial. So they were, they went over their campaigns, how they did it, what the focuses are. It was pretty impressive what they've done. So we're looking towards that as an example. WEA Board meeting later that day, again, urban growth, Sherwood. And transportation, the favorite two subjects in the last month or so. Super fun was going to Brookside Nursing Home for the 100th birthday of Mary, Ms. Mary Louise Nelson. She was a hoot. I did not expect the media was there. KGW was there. Fox 12 was there. Ray Pitts from the paper was there. So I worked with Cheryl Lynn and with Nicole to come up with a mayor proclamation for Ms. Nelson. She was sweet as anything. She used to work in the, back in World War II, she helped build bombers. Yep, Rosie the Riveter, she was delightful to talk to, just a little hard of hearing, but other than that, it was great. Was funny is her daughter lives here in Toowalton, has been living here since Roy Rogers was mayor. So she's been here quite a few years. But that was super enjoyable. They have two residents turning 100 in November and they've asked for us to do it again. And it looks like we'll do it. I talked to, it was fun, it was funny because Mayor Ann from Vancouver does this. And she and I talked about it like a month ago. And all of a sudden, the nursing home reached out and said, hey, would you do this? I'm like, hey, if Mary Ann does it, I'm going to do it. On the 19th, was very happy to raise my presentation sadly for Communities That Care to Dr. Udo, the new TTSD school superintendent. Time was running short and I knew he had a 10-minute presentation. But giving him exposure of what the Communities That Care effort is, ideally getting them involved and supportive. And as I mentioned to him, my favorite slide was the last one and how, you know, TTSD could help Toowalton together. Tiger turns the tide and the whole Communities That Care program to make it successful going forward. Finally, yes, the Heritage Center event was a lot of fun. I won the package ancestry, but it went from 10 guests down to four. I don't know how that works. But I want to thank Marilyn from the Grange for winning Lunch with the Mayor. Yeah, pretty good amount. Yep. And I think that's it. Anything else? Go ahead.
Just because you brought up the Michigan thing, I, they kind of kicked that off when they opened the, they reopened the train station as a Ford building. And there's an innovation center there too. And that whole concert, presentation, innovation, structure and design is available on YouTube. So if, I mean, it starts off with Diana Ross and keeps going. So if you're interested, check it out.
If we could be just one-tenth as successful as Michigan has been in landing businesses, it'd be terrific for the Portland metro area. All right. With that, I'll go ahead and close the work session. We're done a little early. Yay. And we'll reconvene back at 7 o'clock.